All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Tuesday, December 4th, 2018 School Committee Meeting here at Tingsboro High School. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio/video recorded. At this time, I call the meeting to order, and we'll start with introductions to my line.
Chair Fearey.
Robert Mullen.
Good evening, Julie Gustin.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Rango, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tarrell.
Ryan McMahon.
Paul Mitchell.
Joe Lucina, Business Administrator.
Mr. Fearey, you will be the representative.
All right, thank you, everyone. Please stand for the flag.
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I seek a motion to approve the November 20th, 2018 School Committee Meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I carry 6-0-0. Correspondents? Not fine.
Mr. Chair, we have one piece of correspondence tonight. If you go to your drive, you will see the FY '20 budget schedule as developed by the town administrator and as approved by the board selectman last night at their meeting. It has every date in there that we'll need for the FY '20 budget development, including tri-board dates of January 7th and January 28th. What I'd like to do tonight is get a sense from the committee if we have availability for those dates. If we cannot make the tri-board, I told town administrator, Hannah, that I would let him know, but I'm hopeful that, you know, because they're in front of it a little bit early now, January 7th, 28th, everyone should be available. So I just want to gauge the committees.
I will be available.
Availability. Should be available. We're all good. Historically, we certainly have had a problem at some of these meetings with a quorum, so.
I'm fine.
Great.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Awesome. Excellent. So that's in there. The only other thing I'll draw attention to on the budget timeline is the capital asset dates are in there beginning in January 29th and ending at the end of February, so there's a really short window for three or four meetings to develop that plan. And we're going to talk a little more about capital asset later tonight. And that's it for correspondence.
All right. Visitors, comments, and questions? Seeing none, I share the success.
Congrats on Tingsboro High School's football team for their 32-7 win against D.C. Fall Sports Awards was held last Thursday to recognize and celebrate the success of all of our fall athletes. This marks the fall season as we enter the winter season. The festival helped start the holiday season playing at the Festival of Trees on Saturday night in Thompsona, and NHS is currently running a point and grand at the high school. It helps support the adoption.
All right, thank you. Subcommittee update, negotiations. We did have a meeting last week. They're going well.
Motion to take.
Oh, personnel. I'm sorry. Did I skip that?
No. You did.
Also, it's not often on my tour.
I'm sorry. But the motion to take items now.
We're good.
All right. So negotiations, up to ready. Negotiating with the press officials. It's going well. We have another meeting scheduled here later in December, and that's it. I'll pitch you more as we move on. Personnel?
Mr. Chair, we have one new hire, Sean Gregoire, second shift custodian of TES.
All right. Unfinished business. Capital asset. Send that over to Mr. Mullen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Capital asset, just half an hour ago. We went over our priorities again for the entire process for this year, and I touched on these a little bit last meeting. But what I'd like to do is get any feedback from all of you tonight, what your feelings are, and hopefully approve the list and what our priority should be for this year. Still on for our number one priority being the district-wide phone, life safety, and fire alarm systems throughout the district. Phone systems have been failing in several of the buildings. We've not been able to have any voicemail, and this just caused a lot of issues with people calling in and trying to leave a message. That also includes the fire alarm system in this building. There are, they've been having issues of the duct and the heating ducts, and the sensors up there are so old, they have not been able to find any replacement parts for them, or it's been very difficult finding them, and it's time to update that entire system before there is a problem with it.
Could I ask this one question?
Sure.
So how much of that $192 is the middle school? Do we know what that rate will be?
So the middle school would be about $40,000. That now would be just for phones. The life safety system, the fire out panel here at the high school is about $67,000, and about $125,000 would be phones, as well as alarm system at the elementary school.
Now fortunately, the system, the equipment that we're putting into the current middle school, that will be able to be taken out and put into any new building, and anything additional we may need can be added to that. This system that we purchased would have much larger capacity than might be currently. So it wouldn't be able to cover a brand-new building.
Cool. All right, thank you.
The other priority that we've identified as far as the buildings is the roof on the elementary school. The asphalt shingles, 20 years old, there was an issue with the initial installation. We're having leaks in the upper floors, and it's an issue. It could lead to having some mold up there in the building, and then just being able to use some of those rooms on our regular basis. We don't want this to get any worse. It's something we really need to address as soon as possible. The gym bleachers here at the high school, there is issues with ADA compliance. Again, also, these are very old and having difficult times finding parts to repair it. The exterior stairs leading out to the field, the cement is cracking. It could be considered a dangerous issue. The utility gator is for the, it's like a John Deere tractor type of vehicle that allows the maintenance department to move things back and forth outside. And the science sinks up here in the high school, again, are also not ADA compliant. And the last item on this list is the truck that the maintenance department uses. It's almost 10 years old. It's got quite a bit of miles on it. It's something we want to look at, the possibility of in the very near future. Those are the items that we'd be looking at asking the town to support typically by use of borrowing or using the funds that are available within the capital asset reserve account, or any free cash that may be available next year from this budget. The other items on our list, something we spoke about last year was the track renovation here at the high school. The Department of Sora, fantastic installation of our new field, and I think the field, the beautiful field, only makes what we have remaining of a track look absolutely awful. It's a safety issue with that. It's also, it doesn't have enough lanes for us to hold any competitions here. It's right now in the condition that's in is useless. And so we're looking for support in being able to renovate that in the near future. And also the tennis courts over at the elementary school. We don't own them. We don't maintain them, but they're on our property. Even though they're on the bicentennial fields, we're the ones that see them every day. We're the ones that receive the complaints for the condition. And so it's something that we're going to bring up as a possibility of replacement.
Who actually owns those courts?
It's no different than Pierce Field. I think, but as Mr. Mullen alluded to, I think it's one of those things where we don't want to be a situation where we're like the track right now, where it gets beyond repair. They have pulmonary cracks in the courts. It's $10,000 per court to resurface, so we'll be five tennis courts and one basketball court over there. So that's why we're estimating $60,000 to resurface the entire court surface before we lose them.
So what I would do is open it up for any questions, comments.
Is the intention to attack all this this year?
That would be wonderful, although highly unlikely. In discussions that we've had, it was great having Michael here in the meeting today. I think what we really need to focus on as far as the top list is the phone and alarm systems for the district, and the roof shingles. Those are our two big priorities this year for the list. If we can get anything else done, if the will is there for it, that would be wonderful. And all of these items will be brought up in our meetings because they are on our list as priorities. But, and then of course, the track renovation.
Are we at risk for any kind of fines for not being compliant with those other items?
Not as of right now. There's been no other renovations within anything that's been deemed as ADA complacency issues. So since there haven't been any renovations, we haven't had to do a renovation for that to bring these items up to code on that. Not as of yet, but it could keep us from doing anything else.
And just to add one point, Mr. Mullen, is, you know, a lot of these items were or have been on our capital asset plan for several years. All of these items are identified in some form or another in the La Valley Brenziner comprehensive facility study. And now that Mr. Guthrie's on board, just a different set of eyes looking at things, you know, there's nothing new that's jumping out. This is what we've identified over the past several years. I think the phones have really pushed themselves to the top of the list this year, given the fact that they're failing somewhat here on Norris Road. So, you know, I think that's what is, we can identify all the projects in the world, but sometimes the batting order needs to change based on what we have in the school system.
Yep, and each year they may jump around, too.
You know, in the past, we put parking lot on the capital asset. Is that something we're not going to do this year?
You know, I mean, we've had conversations about that in the past, and it's, you know, whether we want to invest in something like that that could change if we were to ever start a new construction project?
I'm just.
No, I understand that.
What I'm more wondering is, we used to have a list of priorities, and, you know, it always got pushed to the end of the list because, as you say, it's not.
Sure.
Not the thing that's just like the tennis court resurfaced, something that probably needs to be done in the next five years, but it doesn't need to be done the next year.
They're still there. Those, all of those, again, identified in the report and things that we see, we can all see, that need to be done, they're still on the list. It's just not on a list that we're bringing forward for consideration for this year.
That's what I'd like to sort of get a handle on is what the list is. I agree, I think that the phone system, the sharing is based on this list, and probably the two most important things that require some assistance.
Absolutely, thanks.
Have you talked to CPC yet about the track? Was it two or?
They've been in formal discussions with some members, but not with the entire group, so.
And that would really be a function of the capital asset committee itself. So I think the goal tonight is to get this board to approve the priority list, and then Rob, Mike, and Amy will represent the school committee on that board, and that board will be the one, I think, that will reach out.
Because I'm sure that there are other things that they're going to have to consider as well.
Okay.
Are there any state grants or anything for any of these ADA items like the science? Would any of that be? I don't know.
We could certainly look. My quick answer is no.
Short of MSBA.
Short of MSBA.
That much of the money, that's the question. Stifled to these days.
Well, I'm in support of the list as it reads. Thank you, Mr. Mullen, and Mike, and Amy, for the work you guys put into creating this and prioritizing it.
So I'd have to thank Ryan Guthrie for all of his hard work. I'd have to thank our superintendent, Mike Flanagan, and Business Administrator, Joe Lucina, for doing the work. We just, we just listened to them and agreed with them.
So I think we would just seek it.
I seek a motion to approve the subcommittee going forward with this list to the full capital asset committee.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion to not prioritize this.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Carry 6-0-0. Appointment to field use committee. Seeing that neither one of them are here tonight.
So I'm going to give this to Dr. Branco.
So I will seek a motion to appoint Ryan Guthrie as the school representative to the field use committee, and Anne Palumbo as the fiscal year 19 citizen-at-large to the field use committee. They're both more than happy to do this.
More than happy.
So if I could get a motion to approve Ryan Guthrie and Anne Palumbo, that would be a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have some discussion. Anytime you use a phrase where she was more than happy, I don't want to think of mental issues.
Especially when they're not here.
They're very happy.
Team players.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0-0. Thank you, Ryan and Anne, for doing that for us. New business. First read policies.
Awesome. Today, we looked at two policies that we had looked at last time with a few small changes. Policy 1.2, the school committee meeting, and it was in your Dropbox. And all this change was that we added the place where we are now, so that we meet at Tingsboro High School, Professional Development Center. And the second, and also another change is instead of the library, it's town office building, community room. So those are the two changes made on that policy. Otherwise, it's exactly the same. And so we're going to be calling for a first read on that tonight. And then the second policy is 2.4, which is a use appeals and a joint jurisdiction of school recreation departments. And all we did to that was to link the appendix to it, which has the fees linked to it, too, right? Yeah. And so that's exactly the same, so we're going to come for a first read on that, too. And that's all we did.
I'll seek a motion to approve Policies 1.2 and 2.4 as a first read. Make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0-0. Technology update.
So Mr. Chair, Mr. Piper's here tonight, our director of technology, to kind of walk us through about an update of new initiatives in the district and kind of give you that 20,000-point view of technology and where we are in Tingsboro. In three short years, I think Derek has done an incredible job of improving the infrastructure and improving connectivity for our students and staff, and I'm excited to hear what he has to say tonight, and certainly looking forward to answering any questions you may have. So I'm giving him, I'm filling time as he's setting up here. I have nothing else nice to say, Derek, so I'm just going to turn it over.
All welcome, Derek. Thanks for coming out tonight.
It's all straight. Thank you. Thanks for having me. It's been three short months so far, and there's so much that's been going on. I was putting this update together, and I said, you know, I'll keep it to 45 minutes, 15 minutes, and then we can get out of here. So I still love to do that, so I tried to figure out some of the real big highlights that are going on, yeah, just the first three months. So people have hit the ground running this year. As I walk around to the various schools, whether it's over at the elementary school, middle school, high school, I see kids, I see teachers really engaging in technology at all different levels, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But there's a lot of good things happening. You see the green screen going on here. You see at the elementary school, they have a new studio, and they're actually streaming that to YouTube in the morning, and recording that to YouTube for people to watch later. We just put a podcast room in over at the middle school, which we're pretty excited about. Couple of the highlights of the district, we currently, again, Chromebooks, we've really kind of gone all in on Chromebooks for our district devices. We have roughly 750 of them right now, district-wide, give or take 10 or 20 at any given time. Kindle fires, we have 72 at the second grade at the elementary school, and we're really ramping up on how to best use those. We have a full day PD this Friday with the second grade on how we're going to use those Kindle fires. So I'm pretty excited about that. Google classroom, again, has been huge, as has all the Google products. I think last year, I feared it was at the end of the year or some point when I gave you an update, we had roughly 100 active classes. I checked today, we have 168 active classes. So that's a big increase just in the first three months. Flipgrid, I threw that on there just because that's one of the video response systems that teachers are using, again, at all levels, whether it's the elementary all the way through high school. That was a big win for our students. They really like to do the video response, gives them a voice, a little choice. Some students are more apt to respond via video than raising their head in class or responding that way. And I think a lot of this is really due to our digital learning specialist. So we have, you know, on our team, we have the guys that are keeping the lights on, supporting the teachers. They're doing a great job. We have our network admin and systems admin, same person, doing both of those roles, doing a great job. But the digital learning specialist gets a lot of the limelight, if you will, because he's out and about. He's the one really interacting with the teachers. And Tom Barton's done a great job. All those things I mentioned were, you know, as well as keeping them supported, he's the one responsible of getting them in there and showing people how to use them. And he's been busier this year than ever. So what I mean with him, you know, he tells me that this year he's been pulled in many different directions, which is great. Again, I saw him working with the principal on a podcast the other day. I've seen him at the elementary school, working with teachers, and some admin over there. So he's all over. So he travels around. He's doing a great job. He has his own podcast right down there, which I'd like to highlight. He just started. He has two episodes, one he did with an English teacher at the high school, and one he did with a principal at the middle school. And they go back and forth on technology and use of technology in schools, especially the last one with the principal, Mr. Ball, who's a really good one, some good stuff came out of that. He also has a website, which he highlights every week. He sends it out for teachers to look at with highlights of what teachers did some great things that week, what things are up and coming. So again, can't say enough about that role, so that would be a great role to get in here. Another highlight this year is Power School. So Power School is our student information system, and it's really, we really want to cap into it, and we have in past years. So we want to be the source of data, the source of truth, if you will. We have data that feeds other systems, but we want it to all come from Power School. And so to do that, we've, again, back to our networking systems admin, he's really the one who's going in there and programming Power School, creating a lot of the online tools that we're rolling out. Part of the registration that goes out through the parents' prepare portal is the student information form. So that's all online now, and we're going to utilize that more and more. Another thing we're very excited about is we're investigating a new system that interacts with Power School that is going to allow us to do digital documents. So currently, we're mailing out hard copy, report cards, progress reports, and such. This is a very simple system, it's just integration with Power School. Report cards will be posted to the parent portal. Parents can go right there and see the PDF of the report cards. So really excited about that. Look forward to that.
Derek, let me jump in there for one second. Just as progressive as we are in terms of technology, we really are a little bit behind in terms of going to online report cards. So the fact that we're going to make this move, and we anticipate to do this third trimester, roll this out?
Second or third?
Second or third trimester, to roll out the fact that we're not mailing progress reports or podcasts on it. It's all right there in the laptop. We shouldn't have to send that home, so that'll be a big shift in this community, so something I just want to, again, highlight.
Yeah, no, it's great. We've been testing it on our test system, and it's pretty flawless. I'm pretty excited. Another big highlight that we're working on this year and that I'm involved in and pretty excited about is the Massachusetts Frameworks for Computer Science and Digital Literacy. Currently, we have a team of three teachers from three schools, Mrs. Maraca, Mr. Bellrose, and Mr. Lucina from the high school and middle school, myself, Dr. Branco's involved as well, Dr. Flannigan, of course. And we're pretty excited about this. Massachusetts rolled out these frameworks, I think, around 2016, and they make sense. You know, a lot of times we talk about digital citizenship, digital literacy, they kind of baked it all into four core columns that span from kindergarten all the way through high school. So currently, the team, again, we met once in November, I think it was, we dove into the frameworks, got a good understanding of what they are, what they're trying to do. We looked at our current state of technology curriculum at TPS at all levels, and right now, we're going out and we're looking at other districts and seeing what they're doing to meet these frameworks. There's a lot of pre-made curriculums through organizations like Code.org, Google, a couple other ones, a bunch of other ones. We have a whole booklet of those, so we're reviewing those as well. So the next step is to review those, to come back, to come up with recommendations on what it's going to take for us to implement these frameworks, because we are a little behind in terms of, you know, our curriculum and what we're doing with technology education. So I think it's a good thing all the way around. So the beginning issue, as you know, in this football last year was BYOD at the high school. We did it, we rolled it out, and we thought it was important to, after one trimester, three short months, get a feel for how everyone's feeling about it. You know, we can walk around and see it in use, but, you know, are we using it correctly? Is it working in the network? So what we did this past, believe I think it was, or two weeks, we sent a survey to students and teachers with the same questions, similar questions, because we wanted to compare the student view to the teacher view and see where their heads were. So 303 students out of 490, 460 responded, 34 teachers responded to the teacher's survey. I'm just going to kind of walk you through a little bit now on some of those results at a high level, going to put together a more formal, succinct analysis of the data. So there was open any questions, as well as multiple choice, you know, how do we feel about certain things? As you can see here, this is just for the students, 300 great students, trying to gauge their participation in BYOD. How many students are bringing their device, other than a cell phone, which is still a valuable tool, if you know? How many are bringing them to school? 91% of them are, 8% are not, 300 great students. I thought that was a great number right there. Next question was how often, if only for briefly, again, you know, we're not saying we need to use a device every class, all class. Some teachers will just use it for a check-in or a checkout, and that's a great use of technology as well. So how often, if only briefly, are you using technology in the classroom? This is very interesting, because students felt like they were using it more daily than teachers said the students were using it. But they're pretty close, daily and frequently, really high numbers out there. 74% of teachers are using it daily or frequently. 81% of students say they're using it frequently or daily. Each question also had a kind of, as well as doing multiple choice, a little comment section to clarify or answer. Some teachers, for instance, said they weren't using it because they were a gym teacher. They are not even yet a gym teacher, so that's fine. Just some random answers, teachers using a found line textbook, school classroom, tutorial videos, Alex Math Program, which has been a big tutorial videos, Alex Math Program, which has been a big hit this year, that was part of the new McGraw math curriculum that we rolled out. This year, last year?
This year.
This year. Teachers are loving the Alex Math Program. Students overwhelmingly said they use their technology to take notes and we'll talk about that a little bit down the line here. And virtual high school, we have students, I think there's more students this year using the virtual high school, which is the online learning, taking their class online than we have before. So to extend it to the Y O D program, help to increase engagement. So what we're looking for here is, you know, how engaging is this technology? Now, we see that they help students to be more engaged, it's more interesting, that's why they need this technology. So we want to see what our students and teachers thought about that. So again, teachers, fifty percent said grade or moderate, had a grade or moderate effect on it. And students felt that sixty-eight percent of them felt that had a grade or moderate effect. But that was interesting there, that these students felt that they were more engaged than the teachers felt that students were more engaged. And just some summaries of some of the answers, explanations. The teachers felt that differentiates instruction better, helps with interactivity, it's easier to make it a regular activity and students seem more comfortable with their own device. Students also said that a couple of times within the survey that they felt comfortable with their own device, they felt more organized. One student felt like it was less dirty to use their own device. Students liked the ability to take and type notes. But on the flip side of that, a lot of students also said that they still prefer hand notes or reading a physical book as opposed to online. And perfectly fine. Easier to get work done, more interactive and you get. Question here, we're trying to really get into the voice and choice. So how much is technology allowing students to have more voice and more choice in the way they learn? Or for the teacher side of it, how do they assess it? You know, instead of giving them a multiple choice task or an essay, are they allowing them choice and voice to show their learning in a different way? So again, it was interesting here, teachers, fifty-one percent were in the grade or moderate category, thought that it provided more flexibility on the way students were, voice and choice. And students who were even greater than that, sixty-nine percent of them thought that they had more voice. So I thought that was very interesting. So students again feel like they're more engaged and they have more voice and choice with technologies. Teachers are a little lower than that. Not quite sure what that means yet, but as I analyze this, I'll let you know. Somebody, again, answers to those was, if you only choose digital versus paper, that's how they interpreted the voice and choice, ability to share comments and obviously, yeah. Students felt that it allowed them to take notes in forms, easier to look up information, they can be more creative with projects. And these are the last, second to last multiple choice question. Overall, as the D Y O D program had a positive addition to the key educational environment, again, in three short months. Teachers, seventy-two percent either strongly agreed or agreed and students, seventy-four percent either strongly agreed or agreed. Neutral, I threw that in there, I'm not a big fan of the neutral, I like people that pick sides, but twenty-two, twenty-three percent were neutral and very few disagreed or strongly disagreed. So I thought that was pretty positive as well. Couple of quick open-ended questions. How has D Y O D impacted your instructional practices? So that would be a teacher language and the student language, or is how does it affect our educational experience? We're kind of getting the feel for both ends. So teachers, flexibility, they don't have to go to labs, they don't have to sign up their cards. We kind of expect that, the technology is there, up and ready. That's printing surprised me a little bit, looking at the numbers on our copiers still, we're doing a whole lot of printing this year. And that's a funny, that's a funny story down the line. Spelling is for printing and I get it. But they save them a lot less printing, so that's a good thing. We've used the Google classroom I talked about and then easier access to online resources such as simulations, that sort of thing. From the student end, there's a whole bunch of easiers as I look at all the open responses, easier to, easier to, easier to, easier to, easier to. Some of the big easiers were easier to find resources, stay organized, take notes and be independent. One for, a few people said that it made their backpacks heavier, that was the effect that's happened on them, but it is more engaging. And then overall comments and suggestions, this is where, of course, it's kind of the, I just opened the door, let me have it kind of thing, let us have it. A lot of it's great, a lot of I like it, so I was feeling real good. Then we get down to the charging and students and teachers as well, that student devices, especially if I'm fifth period, I think it's the top periods, I think it's fifth period, a lot of dead devices. Now, we did offer at the beginning of the year to put power strips in all the classrooms. I think nine teachers turned us up on that. So we're going to throw that out to teachers as well. We have, I think maybe a power strip in the library, we're going to look into putting some more there. Well, by the way, solutions to the math, students overwhelmingly and some teachers really want to be able to practice with one of their D Y O D devices. Many schools don't allow that and I see both sides of it. Again, I'm not taking a side here. What I want to do is meet people, you know, where their needs are. And so we see that as something that informs people, so we'll talk about how we're going to approach that. And Wi-Fi is funny, so it's always good when you throw out a survey right at the end when you have a problem. So for the first two months, I would say everything is good. Then we had a little issue for about a week with our Wi-Fi, which was actually hardware-related. So the rumor out there was we had too many devices on our network and it just crashed the Wi-Fi. Reality was, we put in a new firewall this summer. Great firewall for great company and luck would have it that we got a bad one. Three months in, the power supply went. We got an RMA, which is a replacement shipped to us next day. Had another bad part in that one. So after three firewalls going back and forth in the mail, we finally got one that's good up and running. But of course, this survey took place right after that, hit and miss of interactive activity for onwards of a week. Some comments were interesting, saying it was down for two whole weeks. Typically, it was down for about two hours a day here and there for a few days. But regardless, perception is reality and of course, we know that our Wi-Fi, our network, our infrastructure, especially with all these devices, is our number one need right now. So we definitely have to make sure that we have a stable Wi-Fi, stable network and we're talking in a second how we're going to do that. And then use devices more, students are going to use devices more. There were a lot of responses that said, hey, I'm bringing a device, some of my teachers are using them, some of them aren't, I'm using them in one class, some are using them in all their classes. So usage was kind of an up and down there. So let's talk about next steps. Again, I think all the good things we heard are good things and we want to keep that going. But of course, we need to focus on the needs right now. So charging, as I mentioned, we're going to put more power strips around in classrooms. We're going to see what we can do out here in the library, maybe in the cafeteria, force students to charge their devices safely and securely. Printing, we're currently exploring a print server. So how can we allow students to print efficiently, effectively, all of that and easily? Because again, with different devices, you know, whether you have an Apple or a Mac or a Chromebook, it's going to be a little different. There's ways to do this, right now we're playing around, we're exploring what's called a print server and then how we can also manage the student print. Either just opening it up and see what happens and, you know, have to dial it back, or there are ways through different applications where we might be able to give certain limits to students based on some log in or credentials. So we're definitely looking into the printing because it's important to people we get. So Wi-Fi is two different things, coverage versus bandwidth. So coverage means the access points you have in all the rooms. And again, we have one in every classroom, we have one in the common spaces, the library, the cafeteria. We do need a few more, especially in the library and cafeteria and we're mapping out if there are any other dead spaces in the building. On the flip side of that is what's called bandwidth and that's how much, picture a faucet, how much water's coming out of the faucet, how much internet connection is coming out of all these access points. Right now, we have what's about three hundred megabytes per second coming in and it's doing okay. Ninety percent of the time, that's enough. When we look at the charge, there's been a few days where we've gone over that, meaning there's a whole lot of people doing a whole lot of things on the internet. So it's taking up all the bandwidth, all the water. If someone else goes to turn on the faucet, they're just getting drips at that point. So that's bad, that's important. Again, ninety-six percent of the time, ninety percent of the time, we're sufficient. We need to bump that up, which we expected. The current standard right now, if you look on the Department of Ed's site, under Technology and the information to the highway company that works in Massachusetts, they're suggesting schools should get upwards of one gigabyte per second. Again, that's high usage, the internet here covers high school and middle school, so we don't feel like we're there yet. But we do need to upgrade to about five hundred, maybe seven hundred and fifty. So we're looking at the math, it's not a huge jump. And then redundancy. So as I mentioned before, the firewall goes down. We have one point of failure right now. So the internet comes in, it goes to our firewall, which is just networking equipment and then goes out to all of our users, all of you sitting in this room, all of our students. Any one of those length breaks, the whole school's down in terms of interactive activity, whether it's the line out in the street from the internet to the firewall, firewall to the users, and that's what happened. The middle device there failed, it's just a break in the chain. What a lot of businesses and schools do is they put in a redundancy, which we're looking into. So you typically have one large internet connection coming into your building and then one very small, cheaper backup one coming in for emergencies if the line out in the street that went down with Verizon, let's say. So we might have Verizon coming in for our main, huge amount of internet bandwidth, we might have a very small podcast one coming in for emergency use of all of it. We have basically two firewalls, an active one and a passive one, and those are all connected. So if one goes down, it just fails over to the other one. And then of course, those will all feed the users as well. Not a huge, huge cost. So again, something we have to look at again for the budgeting season right now, something we need to look into for the coming year because again, this is our number one source right now of what we're going to do. And then besides the infrastructure, most importantly to me, when I briefly look at these survey results, they just came in a few days, I'm going to analyze them more, is we talk a lot about what we're doing with technology. And as I read through the note-taking and the note-taking and the note-taking, that's great, we're using technology. Right now, we're using what's called a substitution level, so we're using technology to do something that we couldn't do without technology. And we can take notes with a pen and paper still, we could take a quiz with a pen and paper, we could read a book instead of reading it online. All of that stuff is great and it's great for people to do with technology, but it's at the substitution level. The main goal as educators is we want to get our students to the redefinition of what are we doing with technology that couldn't be done before or can never be done if we don't use technology? So some of the things, getting to that level, as we've seen in the past years, is the Spanish class who is now conversing with them in Portugal, right? Couldn't do that without technology before. You can do the telephone, but that's technically technology. What are we doing to create content, to share content, you know, outside of the classroom walls with technology, not just taking notes and organizing stuff on our device? So while we're doing good things right now, I think there's a lot of good things we could be doing. Again, the digital learning specialist with our great teachers and the professional development that we've been doing and are going to continue to do, I think we can really dive, you know, one shows it as a dive, one shows it as a ladder, so dive or climb, however you want to look at it, to those deeper levels of technology use. So that's what I'm excited about is to get there. The infrastructure is good, we're going to make that stable, but this is where, this is where the rubber hits the road right there, is what we're doing with technology to take us up here. Questions from here?
Well, thank you for the work.
A lot of information there.
There was a lot of information there. We will start with my friend, Mr. Mitchell over here.
Thank you for your presentation. Couple of things, you know, you talked about your deep dive into technology. Are we doing anything to put more information over the Tinkham Public Access TV station? Putting like the Tiger Talk, you said something about putting it on YouTube, those things, can they go up on the public access?
Yeah. We're at the elementary level, it's a little different. We have been working, we serve with Steve Rogan, the media director with the town, of course with the school committee, I think for Live tonight he wrote that. But we do want to continue to work with them to do that. And I know other towns are definitely doing that. So as we're getting into the podcasting, you know, obviously the next level up is the video, things like that, TV shows. So we don't have anything lined up per se.
Well, we do have Crossing the Bridge, which goes up. That's our TV show, we started last year, that we put up in one spring trimester. But I certainly think it's something that Tom Martin could see what's going on in some of the classes that might be content worthy to get over to Steve to get on that channel. Tom's kind of the guy that's out there in the classroom seeing what's going on, even a behind-the-scenes look at this new podcast room at the middle school or what Tom's doing with this podcast, that stuff that we can get to Steve to get out on the TV station.
Even public information like this week, you know, just kind of a kid presented this week, there's a hockey game, great kid, or a football game, whatever the activities are that are going on in the school system to, so those are public information type of things, just to elevate and give some kids some access.
Yeah, I think that's the next level partnership between the town side and the school district side. So what's the adult power going to be that makes that happen? So it's going to take someone on our side working with someone on their side in partnership to make sure that we have lead people to get that content out there, you know, that it can be created, but we need to make sure it's appropriately, the likes we posted and put out there.
Well, Steve does a lot of that, Facebook Live and then all that, you know, that would be, that would be a great way for us to work our way in there.
Yeah, I'd just like to see some more ways to get information out to the community about different things that go on.
Yeah, you mentioned that, I was thinking more of the live things, but yeah, even recorded and the information scrolls on the education channel.
Giving the kids in some of the media classes the ability to sort of use that as a teaching tool, how do we present this better or how do we do, you know, and get that out of the community, get feedback and comments that way.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
The other thing that I was wondering, the firewall, about what's the cost of a firewall?
So after E-Rate, which is the government program, going to get funding from, we have roughly forty percent, I want to say it's around seven thousand?
So just to have one sitting in the closet somewhere?
Yeah.
Just so that you can plug it in and go back on the line?
Insurance.
It's insurance.
Yeah, well, that's what I do.
Yeah.
Right in your face, right? When you shut down, you can't, you don't make your money, so I understand.
It's a best practice, it's, should be doing, I fully support, everybody needs to follow the uses.
Even if it's not...
You don't rely upon that tool immensely and you imagine teachers trying to teach and they don't have access to Google Docs anymore and stuff.
Well, even if it's not, you know, plugged in, ready to turn over, at least it's there and within an hour, you back up and run.
And you can't have them both plugged in and they have to start load balancing. So if too much is coming through one, you'll kind of shift some of the load off to the other. So it's not just sitting there dead, so it's...
Make sure when you plug it in, it works.
So when we start developing Budge-A-Wall, that conversation?
That's what I was making.
So, thank you.
There's a lot of information, it's really good stuff. I'm looking forward to your deeper analysis, hopefully digging into that data.
I want to do, and please, oh, I'm sorry, if, I've got a question I want to ask and if it's something that you'd rather push off to a separate presentation, please feel free, okay? I actually wanted to ask Derek about data security, if that's okay. The, at the MASC meetings that we were at a couple of weeks ago, one of the sessions was about data security and having a process in place that if you are, your information is breached, that you have a process in place for notification and for backup and reestablishing your data. that you have a process in place for notification and for backup and reestablishing your data. The presenters were making a big case for it because one of them did not, and did not notify the Attorney General immediately, and they started being fined quite a bit of money. And I'm just wondering if we have that system in place here right now, and if it's actively updated, or regularly updated.
Yeah, I mean, we have some documentation, we don't have a very formal, what do we do if this happens for a lot of different things? This is something we definitely need to work on. So I guess a short answer is no, we don't have a formal process in place right now.
How much data do we actually store on a local server versus just Google Classroom?
Again, our school is really our source of data for PII data, so personally identifiable information, names, addresses, I don't believe we keep social security numbers anywhere. Obviously, credit cards, we don't keep anywhere. So I'd also have to look at exactly what data we are storing and what are the rules and regulations, whatever you want to call them around, how best to make sure it's secure.
This was a case where the servers were locked out, like you see in the news a lot of times. Service gets completely locked out, and you get a notification saying you pay us...
A ransomware.
A ransomware. And it happens, and one of the schools in Massachewa, several of them have had this happen to them already, and they did not have a plan in place for that. One of them did pay it immediately, but they still didn't notify the Attorney General's office that it happened, and they were still fined a considerable amount of money, upwards of $300,000.
Am I wrong that the majority of our identifiable information is kept on, not on our servers, but on third-party companies? So is this, do we own the server, the power source server? So if we own that, then do we have to work with them, with that company for a backup?
No, the server's here.
It's here? So you don't have to do anything with them then, as far as that?
Nope, it's all stood here, it's all right here, I assure you.
What's big on that case is making sure that the backup is being done correctly, because what should be done, what you probably should do is go to a backup at some point in time and see if that's not there. Make sure that's not, because that's where we get held up. It happened to my company, and the backup wasn't being done correctly, so we had to pay them.
So as a member of the school, and a member of a technology company, we do a lot of stuff, our first recommendation is to not pay. The better one is to have a business committee plan in place, website, backups, offsite backups, maybe once a year, tested, make sure it all works. I can maybe talk to you offline.
So maybe the technology subcommittee should meet on this and have a further conversation with all of us.
That's good.
Thankfully Russians aren't looking at Tinksville, so we're lucky there.
Yeah, but a lot of people are.
Hey, Trump came here, so you don't know.
Yeah.
I have no questions.
Yeah, I'm just happy to see that kids are taking it very positively, and the teachers too, doing a lot of stuff with it.
From a student's perspective, Derek, we didn't have a lot of interest in the classroom. When the internet actually went down, there's one class that really relied on the internet, and they just had no idea what to do. So at least they, like this DYO has been really beneficial for them, you don't have to like go to the lab, not in the fall, and it does that to your other clients, colleges, you just have your laptops whenever you have like 3, 20 minutes or something, that's a little helpful in that process.
We did get a couple of responses from Student Services, and they said the same thing. You know, students come in with their own laptops now for college applications, and it's great because it's all right there.
Derek, you said that 91.2% of the students are bringing their own devices?
Of the ones that responded, right?
Of the ones that responded, and 8.8% are not.
Right.
What was our goal of participation when we rolled this out? Did we have one? I mean, obviously, when everybody had one.
I think when we did the pre-DYO survey, asking, I think we asked parents, will your students be bringing their device? The number that said they would not be bringing their device was definitely higher than that. I want to say it was 12%, maybe over 15, and it went down.
And did they give a reason at the time why? Or do we know why 8.8% of our students are not? Is it...
No, I mean, the only reasons we have right now is what they said in the pre-DYO survey. And some of that was cost-related, and some was philosophical. They just didn't believe that students should have devices.
When we put that pre-survey together, you know, parent forms here, Derek and I were on the phone with representatives of DESC, and there were very strict guidelines, similar to when you do free, reduce lunch applications, that questions you can and can't ask.
Right.
So a lot of it, you get anecdotally through conversations between kids and teachers, and it's all over the map from philosophical to have a couple of devices, to I don't trust my 16-year-old to not break it, you know, like a real humanistic reason across the board. What's more important to me from teaching and learning, is that 8%, you know, represents, you know, real faces and real names, and so the teachers know who those kids are, and we have plenty of other devices in the school district to make sure that if a lesson has to have involved technology, we can't have kids living there without a device.
Well, I think our goal was 70%. As long as we had 70% of the kids bringing their own devices, we had enough devices to handle it.
Correct.
Every kid has a device, yeah.
And have we put in anything to our parents, telling them how helpful this has been for their children?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do...
To bring up more parents into it?
Yeah, what I'd love to do in the very short term, especially before Christmas, is, you know, again, really dig into this data, come up with a nice, the same way to highlight positives, and somehow publicize that, whether it's through a technology update to parents or whatnot.
And do we still have deals available?
With a Chromebook company?
We don't at this point now.
No.
Not so much, no. Especially with Chromebooks, with the price point that they're at, it's hard to get a good deal unless you're buying computers at a time.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
We will move on to finance. Mr. Messina?
Much less innovation than Mr. Piper. 14 no warrants were presented to the school committee tonight. The list of warrant under the accounts in the month are in year proof drive. We have no signing of payroll until the next meeting, and nothing from me for other.
You were kidding.
That was awful. We will move on to the school committee discussion instead of Mr. Fairbanks.
I have nothing tonight, thank you very much.
I'm all set.
I just recognize that tomorrow's National Day of Mourning for President George Herbert Washington, so some people have a day off.
I just want to thank you for the presentation tonight. I had the lecture of working with data ahead of time, and I think what jumped out at me and Derek, and I had an interesting discussion about it, is that the student reports and how they are reporting voice and choice and effectiveness and engagement higher than their teachers, and so that's going to be interesting to come back when we talk with faculty, who I think just because we teach the way we teach, and we're so immersed in our subject here, we don't necessarily notice the impact this is having, but we're clearly hearing from students, hey, you're meeting us where our world is currently and where our needs are. And that was half the battle with this. It's not just about dropping devices and things, but we're wanting to keep it up with the Joneses as far as what we're doing. It's really about giving our kids an opportunity to be on an equal playing field, and meeting them where they are in the world they live in. So then I applaud Derek and all of the teachers for making that work happen, and students, you know, when you're doing a survey like this, you go like this, you hope the kids are going to respond, and 300-plus students actually took the time to reply, says volumes, speaks volumes to me about how much the kids in this community care about giving us that feedback, too. So thank you for doing it.
How was that?
It was a great community event this week, the Festival of Trees. I know that hundreds if not thousands of people participated, and I want to thank the rec committee for putting it on, it's a great event, it always is every year, and I think it shows what the community is, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. It's season going.
So I know we focused on the DYO at the high school, but the technology really exists down at the elementary school. My fourth grader had a report, and she typed up on Google Classroom, and Dad, can you proofread this? Okay, all right, now go ahead, turn it in because I'm going to bed. Oh, okay. It's that young, so by the time she's in high school, it's not going to be a thought that, oh wow, we have laptops in school, they're just going to be so used to it. So I think it's great, I think it's great that it starts so young.
I just want to piggyback on Paulson in terms of community event, it was a great, Festival Trees was a great event. The band had a nice performance on Saturday, Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday, thank you. With Friday night for the Festival of Trees. But as we talk about communities, we think about community, I say this every year, I think one of the most special things we do is our Adopt a Family program, so any support that you can give to the schools, you can contact Mrs. Lenzic or Mrs. Fairbanks. You know, we have families in need, and around this time of year, it's probably one of the most special things we can do is support them, so any support you can give financially, with a gift, with food, whatever, we'll take it and we will make sure the deserving family reaps the reward of that, so that's all I have.
Thank you. We do not have a need for executive session this season, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I think we should have a lot of discussion about this.
I say right.
Thank you, and have a good night.